... Okay, thank you. We'll move right into the agenda. Three-point vote approved in ten minutes of April 30th at 8:00. We take both together. So we, uh, right now. So all, uh, can be a motion. It's second by now. Need discussion? Corrections, adjustments. It's not in favor. Any votes? Four-point-o adjustments to the agenda.
Yeah, we just have one additional nomination for you tonight, which is Sue Borghardt for the health science teaching position at the Bath Regional Career Dental Center. So I think there was backup on your table tonight, I believe.
Add that to eleven point, eleven point two. And I would just like to add chairman's comments and some, uh, like that push to irrelevance. So, uh, at this point, if we can just make that four-point one, chairman's comments. Any other adjustments? Okay, four-point-one chairman's comments, just briefly. If you look on page, on the second page of your agenda, you'll see the extensive list of upcoming events at the end of the school year. As we all know, there's a lot going on in the Philippines with concerts, awards, presentations, and ceremonies. The information is included on the RSU One website. I hope folks, parents, and members of the community generally have an opportunity to take a look at that and go to some of these activities. I think it's, uh, we've had a great year, and as we wind down, this is an opportunity for the kids to show what they've done through the year in terms of music and art and, as I said, all the award ceremonies. And the other thing I want to note, that Patrick and I had the opportunity to go to the adult education graduation late last week, Thursday of last week. And although the numbers in our adult education program are relatively small in terms of graduation, it's just incredible experience to hear some of the stories of some of those, some of those folks who went through adult education to what drives them to get to high school. The way their parents, their neighbors are listening, but there was one graduate that was five kids, still managed to find the time to attend classes and securely, and it was a real uplifting experience for me. I know for the students, obviously, to have that accomplished is just terrific. Okay, five-point-o public session. This is our first public session, and you observed this one for comments from the public or directed at things that are on the agenda. Anybody wish to give us more information? Sixteen-hour reports, we have a couple of presentations to introduce.
So our first presentation, we're happy to have Chawki with us here tonight, and Austin Yor is here to talk further, kind of give you an update on the Waypoint program. And Keith Crowley is also here from Chawki, and we have a couple of students here to, I think, share their experiences. So come on up to the, to the mic.
Hello, everybody. My name is Austin Neuer, and we have Andrew up here and Dana. Andrew and Dana are going to hand you each folder with some further information about Waypoint. So just to give you a little bit of context, Waypoint is a seventh through twelfth grade mentorship program, and it's in our, our first year. So we just started officially in February. Chawki was really lucky and fortunate enough to get a grant from the Lerner Foundation along with seven other organizations across the state. The program, the grant, is called the Aspirations Encuenturer Program, which is pretty exciting. And I got an opportunity to train with an organization called Trekker's up in Rockland for twelve weeks last summer, and Lerner provided the funding and Trekker's provided the model, and Waypoint is our version of that, which is really exciting, along with a lot of things that Chawki does really well as well. You'll see in your handout, there's some goals of the program. I'm not going to cover everything in that handout right tonight, but basically, some of the goals are, we want to increase sense of civic engagement, stewardship, resiliency. We do a lot of leadership and community building skills. And then ultimately, the biggest goal is to try to encourage a commitment to post-secondary something. And that can look a variety of different ways depending on each individual student. We bring on groups of twenty students in seventh grade from both Woolish Central and Bath Middle School, and our goal is to retain as many as we can of those twenty students through twelfth grade. So it's a six-year model. It's not a one-and-done program. It's, it's pretty holistic, it's strength-based, and the students have a ton of voice of choice on what the program looks like. In your handout, you'll notice that there's a framework. Each year has a different theme. In seventh grade, we, our theme is building relationships. So I'm going to have these guys talk about that in just a moment, about their experience so far. Three quick components about what I want to touch on, some highlights about the program so far, because we've, we've been at Rockland Roll now for a few months. The first one is our cohort gathering. So we gather every other week almost as a group of twenty right here in the home headroom over six years. And another part of that that's really exciting is we have volunteer mentors. These mentors, we have six of them, the caliber of these folks is extremely high, they're very skilled. We have school teachers, we have guidance counselors that have been a part of our team, we have volunteer coordinators, city council people that have been involved. It's a pretty great group, and basically goes with the idea that we want to try to expose these young folks to as many caring adults as we can. The second update is they're starting to realize, they being our students, they're starting to realize the importance of the program and why we're doing it. We just had a campaign trip last weekend, literally just wrapped up yesterday, and a lot of light bulbs went off, which is really exciting. I think a lot of folks are starting to really realize why Waypoint is important, especially building those relationships before we get into Morse. The third update is, and something that's really exciting and I'm proud of, is my curriculum. So like, I got a chance to really build a curriculum based on a couple of different things. One is one-on-one contact time. So I checked in with the kids one-on-one in school, a little bit out of school, and that's almost informed the program. And then we also have individualized plans for each student based on some social emotional data that we have on each kid, which is really exciting. It's another early brain goal. There's no fee for the district. The Lerner Foundation has granted us this funding for six years, which covers the majority of the program. There is a program fee for students, which is between $300 and $600, which may sound like a lot, but we also have financial aid. So our financial aid package really is to have that, so not the limitation or barrier. So we want to get folks involved. That's enough talking for me. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and Dana, and they're going to talk a little bit about their experience so far in Waypoint, and then we'll turn it over to you if you have time for any questions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about my experience with Chawki Waypoint. It's been a great experience, and Waypoint has exceeded my expectations. There was a main goal for this year, which was make, build relationships. Some of the activities we've done are things that include people working together. We received a charity, you know, we had to depend on each other. We did a road course where two people got to climb with their own harness, and the people on the ground had to keep the rope tight, so it was, climbing the valve, then we come forward. Also, we were on a big platform, and it was silly, so we had to give it out to everyone in our group and dance the platform. So in the tip, we also, no rush takes. Yeah, for today, I'm very happy to join this group and excited that other kids could have this opportunity next to Chawki Waypoint. I want to kind of control the energy and overcome fears. I also want to, I can trust my peers, they can trust me. I have the leadership skills, Chawki Waypoint and Austin as well are teaching that. I'm looking forward to staying in this organization until this year.
My name is Dana, and I'm here to talk about Chawki Waypoint. It's a really great program. I like it because I have the chance to talk with other peers that I know who have had high school to be there to support me, and that's really helped me. It's also a really good program, and it's really fun. And it also gives me a learning opportunity to get out into wilderness, and, uh, it's, yeah, it's pretty cool to be in. Austin is really great with all of us. He's caring, and he checks in with us a lot to make sure that we're doing it. And if we're not, he tries to see if there's anything that he could do to move us forward from the bad place that we're in, or a good place to keep us going that way. There's just a lot of great things, and I really want the sixth grade this year to be able to go into the program next year.
So can you give it up for them real quick, because that's a... It's all of our first board meetings tonight, so I think it's pretty cool. I think you have, did you have any questions for us?
Anybody have questions, Jack?
I'm the question person. So my question is for Andrew and Dana. So when you talk about meeting new people that you didn't know before, do you, what school do you go, do you both come from, BMS or what?
BMS.
So is it the people you're meeting are new Woolwich kids, maybe you haven't met before?
Yes, and I mean, there are two houses for seventh grade. I know Dana as well as you now, which are other people from the other house, so that also probably, yeah, probably closer to people that are already there.
That's great. It's good to know, especially the transition to high school, you know, in all the sense of all the class, I think, that's really important. And then the question I have for you guys, did you ever go to Chawki before this program?
Yes.
Yeah.
In sixth grade, we took a, just a day trip toward the airport, and it was the way we formed it, put them together.
Just a quick comment on that, though, get a chance to go next year in eighth grade after Flow, it spans from fundamental learning and modern. And we just got done with our campaign trip, and it was an excellent introduction to a lot of things that are going to be happening. So Flow's a community trip, and every eighth grader goes on, so it'll be exciting.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any questions? I just have a couple. When you answered the flow question, I just asked, just a question for you to ask, just how that coordination before Andrew and Dana said now, I just wonder what attracted you to, what made you interested in this program? And how did you get involved in the program, for instance?
Well, Austin came to BMS, not to school, I don't know, and he talked to us, he talked to us about the program and what it would look like for the next few years, and that got me interested.
So for this, I had no interest in joining until my mom convinced me. Since she convinced me, I always was certain, I always trusted, and I'm glad, so that's all.
Well, this, this presentation's had two benefits. So the flow, you're, you're intent to coordinate this program very closely with Flow, I guess that should be...
Yeah, so my hope is that the twenty Waypoint students that we got to introduce to our systems at Chawki over this weekend can be kind of like agents, and like, they can infiltrate the community in the middle school to provide even more positivity around Flow. As many, you know, information spreads quickly in middle school, and so for them to be able to really be that positive voice around Flow. And then I see a lot of them taking on leadership roles, you know, within their groups, because they've done some of the things they're going to be doing next year, not just like forty-eight hours ago.
So I assume when, when you talked to the groups, Andrew and Dana were part of, there were a lot more kids in the room than just the twenty, so I just wonder how you selected the kids, how you selected those.
Yeah, great, great question. So the kids self-selected the program, they apply, and I spent as much time as I could this fall in the schools trying to get to know folks. I chaperoned, anything I could chaperon. Mr. Ward knows, I was in multiple dances, went to the ecology school, that's where I actually worked there. I also just tried to be in the, in school as much as I could, so that was a bit on your face. And then when our application opened up, I encouraged folks to apply. We had twenty-five applicants, which was really great for the first year of our program, and then we selected twenty randomly based out of a couple of different buckets. So we controlled for school, Woolish and Bath, and then we had, we controlled for gender as well.
So you're intent to take twenty each, each set of older, you're going to?
Yep. So next year, we're going to...
And, you know, you mentioned that there is a fee for the kids, do you think, at least in this first round, for any kids, it's, you know, I mean, it's not such a great opportunity, and you would be unfortunate if some kids had to select themselves out because of financial concern, said there was financial aid available, or...
Yeah, it's not efficient, but... Yeah, so a part of the application process, there's an area for financial aid for each family to apply to as much as they need. I'm really thankful and happy to say that we covered most of those requests based on applicants. I really tried to let folks know that we don't want finances to be the reason why folks can't be a part of the program, and we did a good job at covering, actually, the majority of requests for financial aid.
Do you feel that you'll be able to do that coming forward?
Yeah, we've built it into our budget over the next six years to have financial aid available, and that's like near and dear to my heart, so I hope that we can cover it coming forward.
Just one question on comment, I'll start with the comments. I would just say that Chawki, to the board, everything we do with Chawki is top knowledge, and this is just another example. Measuring is important and powerful, but this program is successful right now, very successful in a short period of time because of the human beings that have worked on our students. So Austin, you know, he's almost like a staff member here. I see him, you know, plugging throughout the district, and he's, he's here all the time, a lot of energy, and a great role model, and so thank you for doing that. And my question is, is what about this summer? Do you, are you, what's the schedule look like if there is one?
Yeah, great question. So we, that was, I got informed a ton this weekend because I was asking folks, hey, what do you have planned for the summer? Some folks had plans, some folks didn't. This group, this first group is really active, they love, they love just doing it, moving it. Over the summer, we don't have any like very strict program they scheduled right now, but I see it going, every other people have some sort of informal get-together. So, hey, for example, like, over spring break, we, I sent out a message, hey, whoever's around, I'm going to be at Florence Head, Trailhead at this time, whoever wants to come, come, ten kids show up. So that's going to continue to happen this summer, which is really exciting, and then their eighth grade program here is going to start back up right in the fall, like, four weeks. But I agree, I think the summertime is a great opportunity to provide some of those more informal get-togethers, so that we can continue to check in.
Okay. Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Andrew and Dana, thanks for the presentation. Andrew, thank you for smiling for letting me introduce you.
I have a request. This is all of our first board meeting ever, so could we take a photo with you?
Sure.
Keith Crowley, could you take our photo?
It's got a costume.
All right, everybody smile. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, second presentation, right.
Yeah, so we, we talked about this program back in the fall, I think at the end of last year, and we just thought it would be a good update for, for Morse to come tonight, and Mark Nelson's here as well, who also was out on the bike a lot with students. So thank you guys for being here and providing us an update.
Start with just the morning. So we're going to present here, because we don't have ways to control the slides. Tom Lawrence, go ahead.
Mark Nelson.
So Mark is one of the leading teachers here together, we ride with kids every day. So quick background, I'm a big cyclist, and I do a mountain biking around here. Granted, Kevin Schuh, who works at the Y, said, hey, here comes a grant, and though I hadn't, and I went and Googled it, and here we are, a year later, we got it. It's called Riding for Focus. It's from Specialized, Specialized Foundation, which is a charitable branch of Specialized Bike. So Riding for Focus, is the brain child, Mike Senior, runs Specialized, uses cycling specifically as a tool for kids to achieve academic and social success. Fighting is different from other types of exercise. You gotta be coordinated, you have to pedal rhythmically, you have to know how to shift gears, you have to make decisions, you have to anticipate. There's also a social aspect, where you have to talk to each other, there's etiquette, you have to follow rules on the road. So all that together is a pretty powerful experience that they believe will help kids find success. That's my, so Mike Senior was just a dude on a bike touring Europe, decided to start a bike company. They do about six hundred million a year now, so he made it. He has ADD, he's really open about that, actually, he has ADHD, so he's hyperactive and has a hard time paying attention. He wrote an article in a cycling magazine called Riding is My Ritalin, and that's been his all he had, that was back in 2012. He finds that riding bikes is an ability to focus. So they are basing their assumption on the work of John Ratty, who's a psychiatrist at Harvard, who started work around brain-derived neurotrophic factor, which is protein that your brain releases when you exercise, it actually increases the voltage in your synapses, increases the ability of your synapses to conduct electricity. So it's sort of like a combination of Ritalin and Prozac wrapped up in one, and your body makes, so it's more potent than anything you can get pharmaceutically. So, do you want to talk about what it's like every day, or do you want to jump?
Sure. So right now, what we offer is a morning program, which is what Specialized ideally would like to see, is kids getting out of before school to help them get focused for the day. We have about twenty-one kids, six and seven graders riding with us in the morning. We ride for about a half an hour on trails, on roads, we recruit community members. We have, right now, five days a week that we are riding. Lawrence also rides in the afternoon with about ten eighth graders during their GP time. Definitely is a two-person job, when you have over twenty kids, you have to have two people riding with them. We have a second curriculum, so we start out slow, we work our way through all of the curriculum on Specialized and, and work on getting more difficult as it goes along. And we just, even though these kids, a lot of them are really, really anxious to get out and ride, they're good, super good at understanding that there are some steps that we need to follow before we keep it out on the trails.
Before you go off that, what is scaffolding technical, right?
Scaffolding is basically sequential, like, this is dirt, if you press the brake hard, you will skid. So we work on braking, sort of feathering brakes. You know, balance on the road, they can balance on grass, they can balance on dirt, they can balance on uneven rocky stuff, they can balance on roots. So that's what scaffolding is, making sure everybody's secure before we try to run the hard stuff. And I also wanted to say, the curriculum is driven by Central Michigan University, their physical education doctoral program. It's very, very interesting, it was interesting getting this grant, sort of the window into Silicon Valley, that's where Specialized is, and they flew me out there for training. There are lots of different stakeholders in this thing. Silicon Valley is very, it's a world built on ideas, so Central Michigan University wrote the curriculum. So here's some kids, this is like early, early on, learning how to get on a bike, how to check a bike, the A B C quick check. Dana, are you still here? What's the A B C quick check?
Air brakes, chain, cassette, crank, and then check the rear tires, and then it's like everything else.
Nice going. So every day, A B C quick check. And that's a big deal, you know? Kids ride some pretty scary bikes to school every day, trying to get kids to look at their bikes and figure out how to make them safe. The bikes that we have are, you know, in really good shape. So these were some of our first four A's onto the trail. Or laying on the right is on the pump track, we'll talk about that in a minute. And laying on the left in the woods. So sometimes we practice, we do little sessions on going up steep hills, down steep hills. Sixth grade student going up a hill in the cemetery over there, seventh grade going up a hill behind the Y. And then we actually take kids onto some of the great single tracks, right and left, so on the left, it's a sixth grader on a really narrow little path, and then pump track is on the right, we'll talk more about that in just a minute. So these are the bikes. They're about five hundred bucks retail each, we got twenty-five of them. We also got two years of service, we have a relationship with Central Street Cycles in Brunswick, and they're committed to help us repair them. They didn't really fall, they built them all up very quickly, we tuned them up, we'll talk more about that in a minute, too, but the owner, Lee Houston, is great, he's a former Chawki staff member. So these are them, they're called the pitch. So in the country, we are one of thirty-eight schools who currently have this grant, only school in Maine, one of the few in New England. Some of the schools, like in California, they deployed like two hundred bicycles. Los Angeles, you know, it's a huge, huge school, so they're, they're hauling. But yeah, we're pretty excited to be the only school in Maine to get this grant. Bottom of the slide says it's a multi-year neurological psych research study, so there's a collaboration with Stanford. Stanford's actually attempting to build functional MRI machines that can be worn in little backpacks, looking for specific levels of blood perfusion in the brain that correspond to cycling and cycling movement. So people are riding around with these MRI machines and special little things on their heads, looking for what part of the brain lights up when you ride a bike. And we are one of five schools that are committed to that, in launching this study. It's going to involve some biomedical data that is not ready for time, we're in the early data mode, we're in possession of forty hardware monitors, the software is switching all across the country. We switched so many times tonight, I felt bad. In addition to riding bikes, we use some trail work, there is a brand new organization in that Brunswick, Topson, Woolwich, Mexico area called Six Rivers Namba, New England Mountain Bike Association, part of that, and so when we find low downs, I have parable saw, chopped stuff, weird things. Pump track was another grant, grants be yet grants, so I got the Specialized grant from Bicycle Coalition, and somebody told me they had a grant for pump track, for bicycle infrastructure. So, I said, hey, how about this? Specialized helped with it, we got this grant, Specialized flew two people out, the city collaborated, and that's when you go in, it's sort of like a pile of dirt still, but it's really fun. The city's doing a lot of work, cleaning up, they're just 25G's this week, it's been a great, a great collaboration, and 250 kids throughout. The final day, hopefully this'll work. So, Chawki, yet again, said, hey, this is really awesome, how can we help? And I said, well, tools would be good. So, Chawki, through a grant, provided us with the funds to purchase five bike repair stations, which exist in the Ho-land area. So, there's waiting for our session cycles. We spent the evening going through all the bikes, getting them all set up. This is a bike shop, we got a compressor, we have stuff to do, real bike work, real bike repair. Not sure where this is gonna go yet, but we should expect great things, it's very lively in the interior. So, there, just saying that then. And we had people from the community, we had people who worked at bike shops, we had just people who know bikes and live here, Mr. Mills, he has ridden with us, Mark's husband, and he helped, he's been a huge help. He put together every single one of the stands, that the tools are how we do the work. This is a photo, they did a tour of Bath with the Bath Bike Industry Committee to celebrate bike tour. So, they showed up, 10 community members, and they all, I don't know, 35, 40 of us were riding through Bath. That's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Lawrence. Any questions?
Great presentation, thanks, Mark. So, what's it, you know, you got the bikes, everything started, is it gonna be okay just to keep going here after here now, or what's the amount?
So, the commitment is to run their program for two years, and then we can choose to continue if we want, but the bikes are ours. So, you can say after two years, no. It's tough. And it is tough, you know, getting into the day is a real challenge, but we're trying to tackle it, but we do have the, it's our agency to say, let's keep going, or we're just gonna go onto the bikes and do an actual...
Right, or you can modify it, do something, if it doesn't quite work to those specs, it doesn't mean you have to pay for it.
Exactly.
You can say, this is what works for us, and we're gonna continue, but then you have bike shop, that probably isn't part of the whole... Is that part of that whole program too?
No, no.
It's not saying that it's already evolved in some ways, so...
Oh, it evolved a lot, yeah.
Yeah, so that's great, okay, thanks.
Where do you guys ride the Woolwich kids?
We don't. Do you wanna know why?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question, how you selected kids to get in the program, you have a limit, you had 25 bodies, so I guess that presents the limit, the upward limit?
There is a limit. We began with some teachers, getting some input on who they felt this program would benefit, so we took those people into consideration. Lawrence put out to all the students a survey, who would be interested in riding, and then we just went across them, like Boston said, mixed by gender, mixed by grade six and seven, that were mixed things better, and, but several of them are staff recommendations, because again, this is about focus, it is about getting kids to really get some benefit out of riding more enforcement.
Yeah, it seems like we are growing these opportunities for kids, where you have, you do robotics, and other programs, the program we just heard about tonight, the flow program, and I guess, I just wonder, maybe this is a question for Patrick, how do we, within buildings, how do we spread information among the kids that these are opportunities that are available for them to take advantage of?
Well, it's hard to miss the yellow helmets every morning, you know, kids are checking out their bikes, they're all around, so, a serious answer to your question is, it was announced, it was announced, I think for the entire week, morning announcements, please sign up. I had a Google form, and I basically get kids semi-randomly, semi, hoping to get an equal mix, grade levels, and genders. But yeah, once we started, I mean, I don't think there's anybody who doesn't know, some kids in Woolwich know about it too, you know, I see kids in Woolwich every week. So, thanks.
Sure. Any questions, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, it sounds exciting. I often wonder, I did wonder what that pound of pile of dirt falls by the skate, by the skate group over there, so that is a...
It's a pump. It's a pump track. So, you get good at it, and you go a little bit of speed, and you go around 10, 12 times without getting, like a pump, like a pump swing. You'll have to sign up on Friday.
Great, thank you very much, thanks for the...
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, 7.0, committee reports, update on the building.
So, on May 9th, we got official site approval for a new school, and we are closing two properties that we need to close on, that's in process right now. And just to keep track, if you want to, we're doing advertisements right now, one is for Clerk of the Works, which is part-time, and we'll start to oversee the site work in July, and then closes on May 31st, and then we will interview candidates for Clerk of the Works. And then on June 14th is when the site contractors need to, that's when bids close, and we will open those bids at central office on June 14th, and we'll know, like, that afternoon, who's gonna be our site contractor for the new school.
Do you know how many bids?
I know of three that Ron has said have submitted materials already, and then there were six that had a request for qualifications early on, and then tomorrow, we actually have anybody that's serious about bidding on the site work that has to come, and it's a required walk of the property tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock.
Okay, next one.
Pat, have those bidders had to approve, state proof of this?
Yeah, they go through a process that has to be approved by Ron and his firm, but also the state is involved, and the state will be involved in opening that bid process as well.
Any other questions, Patrick?
So, I have one update, sorry, for you all tonight. Every year, when we receive notice of our, how much money we're getting for our federal title funds, so title, we receive title one, title two, and title four monies, we're required to publicly share that, and also share our plans for how we, how we will fill out our application, and thus propose to spend that money as a dividend, so I'm gonna share that with you tonight. First thing to know, however, is that the money that we're receiving has gone down this year, and just to give you a sense, last year we received 596,000 for title one, and this year it's gone down by $30,000, so we're at 566. That number is completely tied to a three-year average of our free lunch numbers, not free and reduced, just free. And so, overall, the free lunch number, when Tim and I, who sort of scratched our heads and said, it doesn't feel like we have fewer students receiving free lunch, it's actually only down by 3%, but 3% when you're talking about this much money is, at every percentage point, is essentially $10,000. And they do do a three-year average, so if you have a one-year dip, you're not seeing huge changes from year to year, but over the, we checked the last three years, and over the course of three years, we're down by 3%. So, again, it's not a huge shift, and it very well could increase again slightly next year, or stay the same, but it does mean $30,000 for title one. For title two funds, it's based on census data and poverty numbers, it was 109,000 this past year, and now it's going to be 93,000, so that's down by $16,000. The good news is that title four this year was $10,000, and now it's been increased to 53,000, which is an increase of 43,000. And so, we're in the process right now of, that doesn't cover the loss essentially of the other two. And so, Deborah, myself, and Sandra, who's actually the one who oversees title one, and is figuring out how to sort of solve that problem. In terms of the, what we're spending the money on, we have the same plans for this year as, this coming year as we have this past year, so there's really no change, for those of you who aren't aware, we obviously fund four ed techs who work at our title one program on literacy and math support for students, and we fund four and a half literacy and math teachers, who also help those students across the buildings. That actually equals about $639,000 for next year alone. The other sort of projects that fall in title one and title two is we're required to spend 1% of our title one amount on family engagement, which we do every year, and the reading and writing professional development funds come out of title two, our science consultant comes out of title two, and then some of our internal money that we spend on professional development for teachers is also covered under that. And so, I've had to significantly reduce the amount for professional development, not our consultants, but internally we'll have for conferences and whatnot for teachers because of the decrease in funds. Finally, one thing that Deborah and I have also talked about is every year, we put a teacher in title two, you can put personnel in title two, even though it's really for professional development, for one purpose, and it's to reduce class size, so we always put one teacher in there for class size reduction purposes. So, if we continue to see a decrease in these funds, all of us will have to think about, you know, is there a shift we need to think about, picking up something locally? Is there a reduction in our title one staffing we might need to consider? And so, these are just all the things that we're starting to address, so I just wanted to make the board aware of that. Any questions?
Thanks, Kate.
Sure.
So, title one application is still voluntary, there's someone applying for that, and that's going forward?
The way, the title one application, they don't, you don't apply to be serviced by title one, you are basically, based on test scores, are offered the service. The free and reduced lunch application that Tim is responsible for, those are, that's the other thing that Tim and I spoke about, is how important it is for us to get back as many of those as possible, even if it's not from a family who might receive free or reduced lunch, because the more we get back, the more accurate our number is, and therefore receiving the closest to the actual funds we should be receiving. The problem with low return on those forms is you're not necessarily getting an accurate percentage, so our free and reduced lunch numbers very well could be going up, but if people are not turning in the forms, we wouldn't know, nor would we receive the funds. So, Tim and I also spoke about some potential incentives for getting higher return from everybody next year, so more to come on that.
The budget, these reductions or shifts in funding happened after we put the budget together?
Yes, so unfortunately, that, every year since I worked with title one, that's happened, because when we do our budgets here, you call the state, and they give you a guess about what will happen with the money. When I called when we were doing our budget in the winter, and I know, you know, I told Deb, good news, our funding, we've been told, will stay flat or increase. And then these numbers just came out, I think, maybe three weeks ago, and so, it becomes an issue for almost every district, if they rely heavily on paying staff for these amounts.
Okay, maybe at some point, the next, maybe not the next board meeting, board meeting after, if you've had a chance to try to work these numbers and to determine what impact or effect they'll have on your program, and you already mentioned that after this professional development.
Yeah, I think, I'm going to, once we finalize how we're going to solve this particular problem, I could definitely share that out again, and then we can think about this next budget season a little bit more strategically, knowing, I think we should probably just assume it's always gonna be down, and then we'll be in the best case scenario. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 7.0, Sarah, yes, you have a vote here, I don't know if you want to give a report, have you come in? Just successfully, you're in this right?
Yeah, I have just a whole lot of things to say, that since I'm seeing this as my last board meeting, and I just wanna say thank you, and I know a lot, it's really nice opportunity that I can do this, and I've learned so much about, you know, how things like this work, and I can definitely see myself being a part of one of these types of things in the future, and I just want to say thank you, that's all I have to say. Great, bye. Thank you.
I'm glad that I got to be on the school tour too, and I wasn't here for most of it because of sports, and just so much sports, but I think the school is working out really well, we're setting up our last weekend, and it went so smoothly, and I thought everything, like, I saw workers there, and everyone was happy, and it went well, my year is coming down to the end, I think the seniors have, what, 10 school days left, so I'm really excited to find any questions last week, and get through the summer vacation.
Great, thank you. Sarah, thank you. What are you, what are you doing next year?
I'm going to swat people personally, it's intensive.
And what are you doing this year?
I'm not 100% sure, but definitely on the science side, I'm a major.
Good luck, good luck, you should continue to play all your best, Sarah. Okay, item 9.0, superintendent's report, Patrick.
Just a few items, you can see, Steve pointed it out, but you're welcome to attend any of the concerts, ceremonies, you know... You know, you can see the list on the back. But like this week, we have JMG Closing Ceremony on 30th evening. Celebration of Lord E. B. F. S. coming up, all kinds of different events. And I also want to formally invite you to graduation, which is on June 10th at 2 o'clock. Hopefully outside, and it's always nice for the staff, for those of you that can make it, to see you there if you can. Steve mentioned adult head graduation, we have 10 graduates that night. I have the pleasure of reading a speech from a student who actually is in Two Bridges Regional Jail at this time, they could not be at the ceremony. Be able to read his story and his drive to get a diploma from high school and to also go on and pass his act of placere and might take on a college at some point. So it was rewarding. And we probably will hold another graduation, possibly at the jail this summer, for another handful of students that have worked on there, getting a diploma, high school diploma. May 11th, we had our U Matter Day at Woolwich. And I think we probably had, Jason's not here tonight, but I would say 50 to 70 people out front greeting students. It was a little different because we've done that at the middle school level, we've done it at the high school level. But as you know, Woolwich comes in, everybody comes in together. So we had pre-K students coming off the buses and, you know, we welcomed them like everybody else. So, but we spent more time processing what we did that day with our six, seven, and eighth grade students at Woolwich. And I guess that's, that's it.
Thanks, Deborah. Deb, financial report, I have to.
Good evening. Financial report tonight is for the month of April, for the year to wind again. We have two months, but there's still nine remaining pay periods to hit this budget. So we'll be working on using up that encumbered amount. And as of the end of April, we spent $20.8 million out of our $28 million budget. So, and then as far as revenue, we brought in $23.6 million. So it's 81% we brought in, we've got about 18% left. Overall, we project that we'll spend 93.4%, which is in line with last year as well. So the only, everything is, is running like we had planned. Special ed instruction and tuition are pretty much offsetting themselves. So hopefully we'll, won't be too far in the hole with that cost center. We have, we're going to have about $170,000 on debt service cost center this year. And that's because of the Woolwich refunding, so that's good, it's all pretty good change.
Any questions? Thanks. 10.0, whole business. 10.1, review of 2017, 18 more goals.
So I think that we're making really good progress. Patrick's updates on the building construction project. I look forward to finding out who's going to be the clerk of the works. And I think that once we start seeing actual work up there, I think hopefully that's going to get the community excited and make this project a real thing, I think, and that. So I know that we're still active to be, you know, keep on top of the project as we're forward. I'm sure there are many more decisions to be made. Goal number two is developing a place, a just quite communication plan that maximizes our use of technology between parents and the community. I know this has been a hot ticket item, and I know, I apologize, I didn't follow this before the meeting. But has the communications group decided on any of that feedback that we did that?
No.
I will call later on that.
Yep.
I, we, another goal was having the board understand the RTI, Response Intervention. And our schools, I think the presentation at that last board meeting was really insightful for that. And so, an important function for both behavior and academic intervention. And the fourth goal is understanding the teacher evaluation system. And a lot of these teacher evaluation items, curriculums, as they're required by the Department of Education and those statutes and laws change, we change with them. But I think that we've made great progress on this. And I, and I know that as the teachers are better understanding their evaluation process, it helps them become better informed teachers. And I think that that's something that can sell out in this district. Not just waiting for mandate from Agatha, but also understanding what our district, our teacher needs, are ahead of us. So I think we are well set for those goals. Patrick, when can we start looking at it?
Ideally, it would be August. Maybe we could couple it with the evening that we have our first meeting of the year. August would be great. Sometimes we wait until September to test on the board's availability.
Okay, thanks, Jen. 10.2, we have an action item, the second reading of the job description for Dean of Students for that middle school and for Woolwich Center. Spend of bill, motion by the bill, second by Allen. Any discussion on job descriptions? All in favor? Any opposed? Item 10.3, again, action item, the second reading of Policy J, L, C, E, which is the legalization requirements. We have a motion by Allen, second by Bill, to adopt this policy. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Policy is adopted. And second policy, first item, 10.4, Policy J, I, C, E, C, D, and censorship. Motion to adopt. Second by Megan, discussion.
I just want to compliment Jack, we're glad he's here again. He's been sitting here for hours, he's probably only been waiting to come back. But he's said, "I've been waiting a year for this policy to be adjusted." So again, I just want to thank you for all the work you did with the Policy Committee and for being here the last two meetings that we've had.
All in favor? Any opposed? Jack, are you in favor? Thanks very much for pushing us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Okay, 11.0, new business. We have several personnel items passed this morning, Patrick.
First item is just a FYI. Pam Morrison has decided to retire. And I'd like to thank her for 32 years of service as Kanketec and most recently at Woolwich. Okay, 11.2, I don't know if you prefer to take these all in one group or you want to take it as an individual, but I guess I can go through each one. You guys can decide afterwards. So first nomination is for Devin Belize. Devin is here tonight, he's a contributor to SPAM for that. So we're nominating Devin, very pleased to nominate her as the new Assistant Principal at Morrison School. So that's our first nomination. Thank you, Devin. The next nomination we have is for Sarah Williams, grade three teacher at Pittsburgh, replacing Carla Hawkins, who's retired. And then the last goal to nominate is Sue Borgerd, which is the new one that we had at our table tonight. And she's being nominated as the new BRCTC Health Science Instructor. And in your backup, you have, you know, their backgrounds educationally and experience, how many people were on the Indian Union Committee and how many people we interviewed, if you have any questions.
Okay, does the board want to take these all in one motion? Okay, do I have a motion? Motion by Lou, second by Bill, any discussion? Devin, we're glad, this was nip and tuck, I guess. So we're glad that the necessary requirements were achieved. Appreciate the effort, pushing on us. We're all in, it's the most important, that's right.
Mr. Chair, just a moment. Not too many years ago, I was at a family dinner down in Pittsburgh. And the father and the family called me over and said, "You're a social worker, aren't you?" And I said, "Well, a social worker, well coached." And he said, "My daughter's looking to go to school to be a social worker. Could you speak to her?" And so this charming young lady came over and we had a little discussion about how wonderful it was to be a social worker and to help people and invest in people. But I said, "You'll never get rich doing it." And what a pleasure it is to not to be able to vote for you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Devin.
Maybe that changes the vibe. You're mentor, you're mentor by Bill Aronoff. Now, that's, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. 11.3, we need a motion to recommend the elimination of the Woolwich Central School and BMS Assistant Principals position. We have a motion by Lou, second by Allen. Again, this just brings us to the conformity with change that we're getting by, by ready to vote. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And a little bit of housekeeping, 11.4. When we voted our budget last, at the last meeting, you should have also included that vote in the district budget meeting and for the referendum. So we have a motion.
Voted that the board, the notice of election for the regional school unit budget validation referendum presented to the meeting being and is hereby approved and that a regional school unit budget validation referendum being and is hereby called for June 12, 2018 for the purpose of approving the budget adopted at the regional school unit budget meeting for the 2018 and 2019 fiscal year. Further, that the form of notice of amounts adopted at budget meeting presented to this meeting being and is hereby approved and that the Secretary of the Regional School Unit is hereby authorized and directed to complete said notice by adding the amounts approved by the voters for each expenditure category of the total school budget summary expenditure amount, all in accordance with the regional school unit budget meeting on May 29, 2018, and to cause copies of said notice as completed to be delivered to the municipal clerks of each municipality of the regional school unit for posting at the public places for the June 12, 2018 Regional School Unit Budget Validation Referendum.
Thanks, Lou. Okay. With that said, Allen. Any discussion, anybody want Lou to repeat that?
No, no, they don't.
Again, this is just, this is housekeeping, it brings a bit of conformity with the notice. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. 12.0, this is our second public session. 13.0, next meeting dates and locations. So 13.1, we have our district budget meeting next Tuesday, or tomorrow, next Tuesday, May 29, at Middle School at 6 o'clock. And as those of you who have met involved this before know, that it's a scripted event. So I would just ask you, if you know in advance that you're not going to be able to attend the meeting, to let Patrick, let Patrick know so that we can modify the script. John Morrison will be moderating that meeting as he has in the past. 13.2, budget referendum, that, that's the actual paper vote, which is on primary day. And will happen here at Middle School, June 12, at gymnasium. And 13.3, our extra regular meeting will be June 18 after graduation. So Sarah won't be there at the middle school this time. Okay, 14.0, we do have a need for an executive session pursuant to 1U, M, M, SA, 405, 16, to discuss labor contracts. We'll be coming back to general session, and we may take action when we come back to general session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session? A motion by Bill? No, second? Second by Allen? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thank you.